Good afternoon. I'm City Council President Nick Mosby and we are here for a meeting of the committee as a whole on the mayor's redistricting plan. That is City Council Bill 23-0428. To my left, we have Councilman Z. Cohen. We also have Councilman Chris Burnett. We have Councilwoman Odette Ramos. We have Madam Vice President Sharon Green Middleton. We have Chairman Eric Costello. Councilwoman Felicia Porter. Chairman John Bullock. Chairwoman Danny McCray. Chairman Conway. And last but not least Chairman Schleifer. From the mayor's office, we have Lauren Perez. We appreciate you being here. We also have Mr. Green who's holding us down from a legislative services perspective, and Tiffany Macklin in the council president's office, as well as Aaron DeGrathen Wright. With that, obviously, you know, we've talked and talked and talked about this process. This is kind of the pivotal moment that we wanted to get to. We wanted to provide an opportunity for the community to partake in the discussion around the proposed mayor's map. We want to have a very transparent and accessible process. We constantly talked about this being the foundation and core of what democracy looks like and the importance of having the biggest stakeholder in all of this, the community voice in the discussion. With all of the hundreds and hundreds of times for testimony through the town halls, as well as emails, Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram, as well as in person, you know, the council expert, the person that we procured, kind of took all of those things and came up with a map that not only took community input and instinct, but ensuring that we stuck to the whole principles from a statutory requirement of continuity and compactness. We also, as much as possible, tried to balance out so some community resources that we heard from community and some questions there. So with that, we're going to turn it over to Mr. Tony Fairfax unless there's any questions from members about the process next step forward. So we're going to turn it over at this time to Mr. Tony Fairfax where we're here for Mr. Fairfax. The mayor's office was provided this preliminary, some of these preliminary changes about an hour ago. Obviously, Mr. Fairfax has been working literally around the clock to try to ensure that we prepare for this time. And then with that, we'll move forward. Right now, what we have scheduled is, one, the last town hall, which I think is like the seventh meeting that we've hosted, to allow again, community input on any changes that we might come up with today. And then we have two meetings scheduled on Thursday, one at 2:00, the other at 6:00, for us to have another committee as a whole, and then for us to come and have an actual council hearing. I think it's important to note that, you know, when we talked about trying to ensure that the council had its full legislative autonomy, from introduction of the bill all the way through potential override of a veto, that based off of the city solicitor's ruling, we wanted to ensure in good faith that the mayor and the administration understood and know that that was the wishes of the council. And I think that's what we stand here today. Originally said we wanted to double read it out today, vote it out today at tonight's meeting, but I think it's critically important that we allow residents to digest it, we allow the council folks to digest it, the folks that'll be impacted the most to digest it, and just give it one last shot of ensuring that we have full level of transparency, accessibility, and this council does its due diligence. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to you, Mr. Tony Fairfax. If you could kind of walk us through, I guess, what you heard, you know, and from your expertise perspective, where it ultimately put the map. We truly, truly appreciate the time and attention that you've provided the council today. Mr. Fairfax?
Yes, is there a way to share my screen?
You have to give him permission. You can go into presentation mode if you like.
Okay. Can everyone see my screen?
Yes, we can.
Okay. I thought I'd just go provide some background context to where we are and just where we got here. And so I, excuse me, looked at initially some demographic changes for the city that allows us to actually understand where we are. If you can see on the screen, the top line for total population, the city's decreasing slightly, but not that much, about 5.6% between 2010 and 2020. And so it's really hasn't changed that substantially over the last decade. And this leads to, and redistricting would be possibly what's known as a least change approach in some manner, and all the plans to a certain extent follow through that. That means you try to make the minimal changes, you don't start up with brand new districts and such and such and such. So it hasn't been that much change in the city. I also thought I'd go through the process that we went through. It's been a long haul, if you will. Started around 2022, March. And one of the first things, of course, I, you know, reviewed the state code specifically, that No Representation Without Population Act, that's that prison chairman code or legislation. But there is a jurisdictional code, that 1-1307, that really clarifies it for jurisdictions and what they should do. And essence, and it really mirrors to a certain extent, excuse me, the state legislative codes. And of course, the City Baltimore Charter, Article 3, Section 7, I went over that last time. You have those five direct criteria, then you have a sort of a catch-all with the Supreme Court has given you guidance. And so I looked at all of that. Right off the beginning, there was somewhat of an analysis of the district size. There was a debate whether the district size of the council should maybe change. The city did an analysis, and it came out with Baltimore is fine in its district size. If it wanted to change, it probably could, but it's fine. Again, I looked at the demographic changes in that, and over the, I guess, year or so, there's been about 13 different plans at that 14 district level. And I also looked at two different plans at a different level, different district level, just to see what could occur. And then, of course, during this last part, looked at the mayor's plan, and I'll show you some aspects of that. Of course, these plans were submitted to the council president's staff and back and forth, it went through. There were town halls that integrated comments for these plans. And of course, you know, some of the mayor's changes were, of course, incorporated into the plans. And then Plan A-12 was really selected as the proposed plan. As I mentioned before, you know, we're using the adjusted data, or at least I'm using the adjusted data. That is the data where the prison population has been allocated to the last known address. And to a certain extent, all of these plans use a least change approach. Thought I'd go over the current plan. I think we talked about this a little bit. The two areas to point out really are that District 1 and District 11, they increased substantially. You see that 23%, 23.94% in the 25.12%. That was, that percentage rather, is what it is above the ideal population size. Remember that ideal population size is what we're shooting for, for the districts. And so those two districts specifically have to come down and areas have to be removed. We really don't have any choice on that. You see the red areas are ones that are below the ideal population size. And so, in essence, what you have are areas and, excuse me, some of the districts that need to add population to bring the plan within acceptable population deviation. Just looking at some of the demographics of the current plan, you see the areas that are above and areas that are below. Thought I'd just look at the minority population of the current plan. And so far as minority population, you see the yellow is, represents a majority race or ethnicity. You see the majority black is in 10, if you will, of those majority black districts. You have two that are in, excuse me, two that are majority white. You have two that are, in essence, have no majority white, black, or Asian, or Latino population. Same thing for the C-VAP, except C-VAP moves one of the districts, I believe it's District 10, to majority black, when you look at that citizen voting age population. District 11, you can see is the highest population. District 9 is the lowest, 14%. Overall, it's 39% for the current district. So you have essentially, you have to redraw the district boundaries to bring that acceptability into it. You see the black VAP, as I articulated before, and majority white VAP for those two districts. So this is just a replay. The plan of A-12, I'm going to go over, but there were some last minute changes. And so, in essence, I'm going to have to flip over to a mapping program because the slides, because of last minute changes, things happened. And wasn't able to incorporate it into the presentation. But I will essentially show you that this is the plan, the proposed plan, A-12. You can see it once again, the black letter, the black numerical values are the ones that are above the ideal population, and the red are the ones that are below ideal population. The background and color represents the current district. So you can see the current districts that are added. And depending upon how much detail you all want to go through, I will, I will go into detail and zoom down to those particular areas that that's desired. Once again, the demographics of this, you have a high of 4.61 and a low of 4.83. So it brings it within that acceptable population deviation for those two ends. Remember 10% as I spoke before is needed. If we look at a, from a race and ethnicity point of view, it mirrors the current plan. And so those that were majority blacks stayed majority black, those who were majority whites stayed majority white. So the plan really mirrors the current, particularly districts, as they are now insofar as majority race and ethnicity. The population deviation is 9.44. Once again, it's acceptable and it mirrors that racially what exists now. You have districts of five and, I believe, eight, excuse me, that, let me ask you this. This is when I had that problem. I clicked on something that popped up and I had that problem. We'll see if I have this problem again, where my slides will not go through. Anyway, five and eight did not change, so they remain the same. District 11 was reduced, so you can think of District 11 as maintaining in its proposed A-12 situation, all of the area that was in the current plan was in, is in the A-12 plan. Meaning that, excuse me, I'm going to reverse that. All of the area that was, that's in the A-12 plan was in the current plan. So it's just whittled down, if you will. Now let me, let me see if I change. Hopefully, you can see a new slide? And let me know if you cannot see a new slide?
No, we still see the Plan A-12 highlights.
All right, let me, let me see. Let me try this. Can you see this?
No.
Okay, hold on just a second. Yeah, I had the same thing. This message popped up.
We're going to try to rescind your privilege and then give it back to you. Maybe that'll work.
Yes. Are you able to see it now?
Yeah, we're good for now. We're good for now.
All right, good. just to show you a comparison of the plans. When you're looking at the plans and you're comparing that criteria, that the city, that's included in the city charter, including that last catch-all of the Supreme Court, which those are in red, if you will. You look at population deviation, and of course, the current plan is outside of population deviation or acceptable. Plan A-12 is within acceptable deviation, but it is higher than the mayor's plan. The mayor's plan is 9.27, Plan A-12 is 9.44. If you look at contiguity, you see that all the plans meet contiguity. There is that bridge connection to the industrial area that the mayor has, but that's an acceptable contiguity. But you can use it really to base and judge the plan off of. If you look at compactness, the current plan is slightly more compact than the other plans. Plan A-12 and the mayor's plan are equally compact. And this is looking at what's called the mean of all those, those three measures. So the mean for re-op for all the districts, the mean for Posby-Popper, and the mean for Convex Hall. And so when you look at the compactness of the two plans, A-12 and the mayor's plan, you have re-op where the mayor's plan does better, because remember, you're trying to get closer to that value of 1. You have the Posby-Popper where they're both the same. And then you have the Convex Hall where the A-12 plan, it performs better than the mayor's plan, so it's a wash. So really, both of them are equally compact using that measurement scheme. The natural boundaries, you know, this is the river that extends into the harbor and the Potosco, I believe, river. There is a, it uses, or rather, the current plan and the A-12 plan follows that. So that's why you see it in the Y in the blue. And I gave a minus to, even though it is acceptable, it's something crossing over to that area. It is something that doesn't follow natural boundaries. It's certainly valid, but, you know, it's not as, it's not the best plan insofar as that's concerned. When you look at existing boundaries, remember, one of the things is to see how well it actually look, follows existing boundaries. Both, both of them are the same, really. I couldn't give an edge one way or the other. I didn't want to rather give an edge because they were so, so close. When you look at precinct splits, both of them use whole precincts, so of course, they're equal in that. And neighborhood splits and these landmark splits, you know, one of the Supreme Court's sort of guidance or directions is to see if you can preserve communities of interest. And so in this particular case, a neighborhood is a generally accepted community of interest. And the next one, the landmark areas, the landmark areas comes from the census bureau, or at least the ones I use, and they could be colleges, universities, it could be airports, they could be hospitals, so forth and so on, shopping centers, cemeteries, things that we would like to see wholly contained within one district or another. And so the neighborhood, the A-12 splits slightly less, and so the edge comes to that in 162. As a side note, this comes from, the neighborhoods come from the Baltimore City GIS website. I downloaded the shapefile from there. And there are about 270-some neighborhoods, so 162 split. The reason why they're so high splitting is because neighborhoods don't follow precinct boundaries. And so they're going to split many, 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 or times, except for the ones that are internal to the district. When looking at that landmark, those landmark areas, you see five, once again, a little edge to Plan A-12, and six for the mayor's plan and for the current plan. Overall, if you just summarize all of it, you see from my analysis, you have Plan A-12 performing equal or better of six of eight criteria. The mayor's plan is equal or better in four of eight. And then, of course, the current plan, three of eight criteria. I guess, given insofar as the criteria to edge to Plan A-12. And so I thought I'd stop there and ask if, you know, is there any desire to, let's say, zoom down on any particular districts that we can, we can go into the differences on that.
Thank you, Mr. Fairfax. Just for everyone's edification, current plan means what we, what the current plan is today, what was passed 10 years ago. The mayor's plan is obviously what was proposed in the bill. And then A-12 is the amendment on top of the proposed plan that we got from community input, as well as input from council members. With that, I want to open it up for questions or concerns from council members.
Can we just put the map back on?
Mr. Fairfax, could you put the citywide view map back on the screen for us?
Yes.
Are there any questions or concerns? Councilwoman Porter?
Thank you, Mr. President. Was this sent electronically? This presentation sent electronically?
No, I don't believe that. Have we sent this out yet? No, we haven't.
Okay.
But every, all council members will receive this after this hearing.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions, concerns, comments? So, with that, we're going to also provide opportunity for the public. I don't think anyone has signed up. Is that accurate, Mr. Green? You can go check, and then we're going to check online. Dexter's going to look for us real quick. So again, the process will be between now, Wednesday. Council members, sink your teeth in, try to identify any additional questions or concerns you might have. On Wednesday, we're going to open it up again to the public to provide a town hall type of setting where they can just come and provide any questions, concerns, or issues that they might have with the map. And then from there, the strategy will be any cleanup between that point and Thursday for what we like to put in front of the committee as a whole to vote out, and then ultimately vote out as a body on Thursday night.
Mr. President.
Councilman Cohen?
Thank you, Mr. President. Can we, when we receive the map electronically, have some kind of ability to zoom in at the block level? Just want to...
Yeah, that's a good question. So when we do it, Mr. Fairfax, we'll provide the citywide A-12, and then zoom in at the street level of your particular district. So you'll be able to see all your boundaries, where it is currently today, where the plan is, and then any differences associated with what the original proposal provided. Are there any other questions?
No one's signed up.
So no one is here, signed up? And I believe there's no one online as well, right? Please use the raise hand function if you're interested. The maps will be readily available following this hearing. I do not see any hand raised. We're going to go through. Is that one?
I see three.
Okay. First up, Mr. Leo. Mr. Leo?
Hello?
Hello?
Sorry if I'm not super clear. I was just wondering, I noticed 1 and 12 touch, and they have quite a large variation in the, in Plan A-12 between population. Is that Harbor East precinct so populated that it would throw off the balance more that specific? Or is there a reason why that one isn't in 12? It's okay if it isn't, but I was just wondering.
No, it's actually an excellent question. So, you know, one of the grading criterias was to try to keep communities together. And when we look at the precinct boundary level, layer, the southern portion, you know, the Harbor Point, Harbor East portion, you know, they're essentially basically two communities. So we wouldn't split that up. And if we put that in the first district, it would send the deviation well above 5%.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you. See additional hand raised. Liz, a minute. We're going to unmute you, Liz. Try to do it again. Larry? No, one above. Yeah. Liz, you have two minutes?
Yes, I just, I'm wondering, I, it's really hard to read the map, and I am curious where Upper Fells Point falls in this map? Which district?
I think Upper Fells has two precincts.
I, I, I see it somewhere.
Say that one more time. Yeah, it, I think felt, I think technically it has two precincts. I think one is kind of overlaps inside of the 13th, but it matches the existing boundary that's currently part of today's map.
Okay, all right, thank you.
No, thank you. I think, I'm glad you pointed that out, Liz. I think that was one of the questions. Just to give some huge highlights, you know, we heard a lot from Hollentown, we heard a lot from Fells Point, as well as Howard Park, Forest Park, Morale Park, as it relates to So I just want to point that out as it relates to continuity and trying to stick with neighborhood boundaries as much as possible. So with that, that's all the questions that we have from online. We do not have any members of the public signed up today. Again, I want to stress to everybody, Wednesday will be the next town hall. It's Wednesday at, is it 5:00 or 6:00? Wednesday at 6:00 PM this Wednesday, where we'll provide each member of the public to come and provide any questions, concerns for the council. Council members will obviously have it between now and then. The goal and the objective is for us to sit down with a final proposed map and figure out which way the council decides to move forward as it relates to handing it back over to the administration. With that, I'm going to turn it back over to any questions or concerns from members in the body. Hearing and seeing none, thank you. You'll receive the email, and then please don't hesitate to reach out again with any questions or concerns you might have. This will, during this meeting, we'll open it again back up for Wednesday at 6:00 PM for the committee as a whole meeting.
Are you recessed?
Oh, yeah, we, thank you, Mr. Green. We're going to actually put it in recess. Again, we plan to come back committee as a whole for the town hall on Wednesday at 6:00, and then on 2:00 on Thursday for the next committee as a whole meeting. Baltimore, we love you.